If I can get more information about it from behind here.
Good.
So, do you have other questions?
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll just verbally do it.
Okay. Yes.
That item passes unanimously. The next item is Item 3, Scheduled Business. Under A is Discussion, Possible Action to Approve the Collective Bargaining Agreement with the IAFF Local 3434.
Chief Gibson's going to talk to you about the highlights of the agreement. This is a two-year agreement. In the second year, the only provision that's in there is for us to talk about a cost of living raise. But other than that, there's no guarantees in the second year. But it will take us through fiscal year 2027, July 1, 2027.
Did you give them the notes like you gave the union?
Yes.
So do y'all understand the 4896 versus a Kelly? Okay.
There's no fiscal impact to the minute.
They still work 10 shifts a month?
Yeah.
So that's something that they were?
They were for that. They wanted that.
And it's not in there now, right?
No. Right now, they work one on, one off, one on, one off, one on, four off. So now they'll just work two on, four off.
And this is on a trial. We're gonna try it for a year. I wanted to try it in the new fire station. They convinced me they want to try it in the existing one and see if it works for them.
And what they'll do is they'll just vote on it if they want to change it. And the city will also, the city manager will decide if he wants to change it back. If they do at that year mark, then it'll change back. Just like when we went to the shift they're on now.
And the chief has inquired with some other fire chiefs and other organizations, and they seem to be happy with it.
Yeah. And Texas is real big, 4896. In Oklahoma, I know Stillwater does it, and Hinton does it. And they're both, their chiefs love it. So it cuts down on the sick time usage and stuff like that.
Go ahead, chief.
The next item would be the step increases, which is usual step increase. Grandfathered step increases. Employees hired prior to July 1, 2025 should be grandfathered in into receiving their annual step increase on July 1 of each year regardless of hire date. So the fire department has always been July 1 they get their rate. Which apparently the rest of the city has changed to on their hire date.
On their anniversary day.
On their anniversary. So this, and this all just pertains to the firefighters. Um, anniversary day also. Cost of living, agree to 3%. And then they agree to meet prior to July 1, 2026 to talk about cost of living. I don't think there's any other.
The only other provision was the 457 plan.
Yeah, the 457, which we met with the guy today at the department head meeting. Sounds like a good idea to me. And Jim said he had it in every other city.
There's no cost to the city. Any cost to the account will be paid by the individual employee. They will come out and meet with each department. I told them that this isn't exclusive just to the fire department, that any employee in the city will have the opportunity to participate in that. Our only obligation is for Anita to make sure it gets taken out of their check and sent to the company at this 457.
Any questions on any of that?
Yeah. Other than that, everything else roll over.
So who brought the 457? Is that your idea or is that employee?
The union's been bringing it up back when I was president. Travis went to a class in the past year, and they brought it up too.
Okay.
But we just beat them to it. Or the union beat them to it.
As far as the management fees of that 457 plan, that, no cost to the city as far as that at all?
All goes on the employee.
Any questions?
The chief and I would recommend approval of this agreement. And as far as the merit and the cost of living, we have recommended that that be approved for all the, even the non-union employees. We recommend approval.
Does the 4896, back to that, does that increase in overtime? Did you ask about that question?
Yeah. Anita sat down with the union to figure it. It's the exact same hours as is now.
Okay.
Right, Anita?
Actually, it might even be annually a couple of hours less overtime because there's not such a bulk amount of overtime on one payroll section. So yeah, we did the math on that.
Basically still 10 days a month.
Yeah.
Right. And it's actually, the way it's set up right now, the agreement that we came to with the fire department, it's the exact same dollars per, for hours and overtime hours as when we were on the 2448.
Which was a shift we were on prior to the one they're on now.
Yeah. And that's the, we were on that since the dawn of time.
Yeah. They had that until two years ago.
Yeah, that when we switched.
And then they switched to Kelly, and then now they want to go to this.
The other thing that the chief, it came from management, was mandatory overtime. You want to take a minute and explain the challenges you've had with that?
Yeah, so they, of course, they want to be, if they're on call, they want to pay. I said, "We'll pay you if you come in."
Right.
"We're not paying you to sit at home." But, so they didn't like that, and I didn't think the city should pay. So they come up with an idea of, so if you got six guys on shift, then tomorrow they only have four, finds their minimum. Well, one of these guys can leave and cover tomorrow and just swap it. No overtime, nothing for the city. Yeah. So they'll just keep a bank of what they swap and use it as quick as they can to get it back.
So here again, and I've worked with a number of unions, I think what we have in Kingfisher, we're fortunate to have, that both management and labor seem to find a compromise in making sure that the citizens of Kingfisher and the, well, the whole county, because we answer ambulance calls throughout the county, are getting a good response and that we have a minimum of five guys on a shift. But that covers it all.
According to the contract, we have to have at least four a day, because that's two ambulances. We still need another guy because we have three. But the other guy will pick up a police officer or deputy to drive us to cover. But the 522 ambulance contract is two, two ambulances at all times.
Any other questions, Chief Gibson? If not, do we have a motion?
I can motion to approve Item A, the collective bargaining agreement with the IAFF Local 3434.
Second.
Second.
Yes.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, sir.
I think I'm the next one, too.
Okay. And that motion carries. The next item is Item B, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve Ordinance 2025-005 to Adjust Ambulance Fees. Floor is yours, sir.
So I put a piece of paper in front of y'all showing the old versus the new fees. That's a drastic change. State Bill 2872 passed, and it came into effect January 1 of 2025, where we can charge up to 325% for Medicare allowable or out-of-network ambulance service. So I've talked to Jim about it, see if he's interested in bringing it up. I will tell you, it's probably gonna go down. There's already a bill going through dropping it to 275%.
You know, the job. What are the major payers that this service doesn't, is not in network with?
I don't know. So I can't tell you all the ins and outs of it, but I've talked to AcuFile.
So I'm gonna need to clarify. This is for out-of-network, out-of-network payers?
I think it's for private, like Blue Cross Blue Shield. They would, they would fall into this, I believe.
Okay. So they, okay. I'm just, I'm just trying to.
I think it's anyone we don't have a contract with, which is Medicare is all that we have contracts. Am I right on that, Anita?
Yes, I'm understanding. Who's this, who's this rate gonna, going to, to affect?
Who's the rate increase?
Who's the rate increase gonna affect?
Anybody that uses it. Yeah.
Except Medicare patients.
It won't increase Medicare patients?
Right.
Medicare, Medicare, and Medicaid.
And I didn't look it up to see what percentage of ours are Medicare, but I'm sure it's a fair amount.
Is it Medicare and Medicaid?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, both.
But you said the, the bill passed was to allow 320%?
320% of the Medicare allowable.
Okay.
We can bill. I don't mean that we're gonna pay that.
That doesn't mean they're gonna pay it. The private payers, the Signet, and the UHC, they're not gonna pay that. But you can bill them, you can bill them 8,000%, but.
Yeah. So out-of-network means a provider that does not contract with the healthcare insurer of the enrollee receiving that covered ambulance service.
Right.
And we only contract with Medicare.
And when you say "we," who's "we"?
The ambulance service.
We have a third-party ambulance service that does our billing.
So everybody is out of network except for Medicare, Medicaid?
That's correct.
So nobody can use their, their private payer benefits for an ambulance service in the city, in this county?
Yes.
Yes, they can.
It's an out-of-network benefit, but some people don't have out-of-network benefits.
I'm sorry, I don't have that answered for you.
We're in-network for some insurance companies, but not all.
Well, that makes sense, but I mean, that would be a good, good thing to know.
More or less Medicare, Blue Cross Blue Shield. Many of them we are in-network, but not for every little stinking one.
Sure, sure.
And I'll tell you, Commissioner, one of my concerns with our third billing party is they're about three months behind getting our bills out. And they're not very aggressive. Like, if you get a bill for $1,000 and your insurance carrier only pays 700, the city doesn't go back after you for the other 300. I've been in communities where we've administered it internally in the fire department. I've had an administrative assistant. But there's so many codes and the insurance, you know, is very complex. But we're gonna look at, at another carrier, because I don't like being three months behind in our billing. Because everything is computerized now. And those bills should go out every week. But we are not aggressive in going after people that aren't paying their.
So is that, is that, is that 90-day ARs, is that based off of our third-party vendor just not getting the bills out in time, or is it, is that the payer's not paying within 90 days?
I think you said the invoices are.
Yeah, the invoices are not going out for 90 days.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So this is basically saying that this is what we're gonna bill. This is what we'll bill, and a patient will get an EOB with these charges on it. Okay. And then, but that, but an EOB won't be exactly what the patient pays?
That's correct.
Because then it'll be specifically what we're contracted with, whether it's in-network or out-of-network?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, Anita, you're saying we're in-network with most major payers?
Yes.
Okay. That makes more sense to me.
Thanks.
And that's what I could use the whole bill.
Yeah, I'll read it. Thank you.
So out of curiosity, and I'm just to follow up, I'm kinda, so say we're gonna bill whatever it is, 1,250 bucks for this service.
That's what we're billing now.
Okay, whatever it is. So 1,250, just for easy numbers. And you have an agreed rate with Medicare for whatever you said, 400 bucks.
Yeah.
If, if somebody else has Blue Cross Blue Shield, and Blue Cross Blue Shield says we agree to pay 600, typically the remaining part of that's responsibility of the.
Person.
Person. You don't have agreed rates with anybody else. So I would be a little bit curious as to, I know you said being aggressive to go seek that.
Well, according to this matter, if I, if I understand correctly, they do that, in your scenario, we, we would bill, if somebody had Blue Cross Blue Shield of Oklahoma, we would bill the 1,250 to Blue Cross Blue Shield of Oklahoma. If we have a contract, if we're in network contract with them, like you said, they'll have a negotiated rate. Let's say they pay the 600 bucks.
Yeah.
Then if that patient is susceptible to their copays or their deductibles from that $600, then they'll pay, pay whatever that is. If they're, if they've met their copay or their deductible, and they have a 10% copay, then they'll be, they'll be charged. The patient will be charged 60 bucks, and the rest will be paid by the financial. Or if they haven't met their deductible, then they may owe the whole $600, but it goes towards whatever their deductible would be. But this, yeah, that's, I mean, that's the way it typically works in.
Any other.
Yeah, in the medical field.
For sure.
But this is just basically saying that we can charge up to $2,000 now instead of the 1,250. And then, since it's an allowable charge, then you can go back and you can renegotiate if you can, if you want, with your, with your private payers.
I'm curious. What is, so I get legislation says, hey, you can bill up to whatever. I'm curious what our costs are. If we look at our annual cost of what it costs to run ambulance services, because we're not trying to cut a fat cow here, I mean, I would be interested in knowing for the service, what's it gonna cost us to ensure that we're not charging the people that we're servicing something crazy?
And I'd be on Anita.
Well.
Should we get Medicare money back from the government every year that's been going up every year to Gnet?
Yeah.
And we get that because we are not making money on our ambulance. We wouldn't be getting that $100,000. I mean, we only get a percentage of what our loss is.
So they come in and audit your books to know what your costs are?
We send them the, a full detail of our fire department expenses. And they break it down, and we get money back from a Medicare fund. And it's kind of a, I'm not sure really where the Medicare money comes from. Ryan might know. But we've been getting it for about the last, well, since 2020, I think. And it's because we run out of loss.
And just to give you an example, last year, the chief and I were talking about this this morning, they did 1,100 ambulance calls. And so if you just charge $1,000 per ambulance, you're talking 1.1 million dollars. And yet our gross revenue that came in was in the $400,000 range. So fortunately, the 522 funds that we get from the county help subsidize our ambulance.
I'm not curious, I mean, I'm not questioning that. I'd just like to know what our costs are. I know that an ambulance is gonna cost us 400,000 bucks. Is that right?
320.
When we do our, when we do our costs, what, how are we, how are we calculating the labor costs on this? Because if we didn't have this ambulance service, we wouldn't have to have 18 FTEs. We could have, we could have 12 FTEs.
That's correct.
So is that, is that part of the overall costs of, to the, to the city that we're calculating in?
Well, if we get a million dollars or more, we've got a million 75,000 so far, and we have another check coming in. And then you add the 400,000 from the ambulance fees that we get. You know, you're at 1.4 million out of a budget of 2.2 million. So we are definitely covering our costs to run those employees.
Additional.
Yeah.
I was just curious. I just wanted to make sure that we, we give fair prices to the people we're servicing.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And I agree. This just come across my email. I brought it to Jim because AcuFile actually sent me these numbers. And like, "Hey, you wanna start charging this?" But we can't just say, "Yes, we gotta take it from y'all."
Right.
Brought it in front of y'all.
Any other questions, comments? If not, do we have a motion?
I'm gonna motion to approve Item B.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Item B, motion carries and is approved. Item C is Discussion, Possible Action on Acceptance of the FY 2024 Audit as presented by CBW Laura Morgan, CPA.
I know we had copies of the audit. Did we get them distributed?
I sent them digital to them. Most people want them digital, not paper. But I have the paper if you're more than welcome to want them.
Hello, my name's Laura Morgan. I'm with CBW Professional Group. And we want to thank you for selecting us to perform your 2024 fiscal year audit. We did your audit with standards set forth by the Constitution of the United States and nearly accepted. Happy to announce you had another clean audit opinion. We found no material deficiencies, material weaknesses. I can go over a couple things, but if you guys don't have a copy in front of you, I can just hit a couple highlights.
Go ahead.
If you have questions, I'll email it to Chuck myself. For the fiscal year ended June 30, 2024, your total net position decreased by half a million dollars or about 1.2% from the prior year. The expenses for governmental activities were 8.7 million, and were funded by program reg, reg, sorry, revenues of 3 million. And further funded with taxes and other general revenues and transfers in that totaled 6.9 million. The city's business-type activities, such as utilities, program revenues, were under expenses by 1.8 million. For budgetary reporting purposes, the general fund reported revenues over estimates by 146,000, about 1.7%. And expenditures were under the final appropriations by just about the same at 147,600. I had some pages flagged for you to go over some things, but do you have any specific questions I could try to find for you?
Any questions?
I'm sure you've done other municipalities.
Yes, sir.
So how do our books look compared to everybody else?
They actually look really good.
Fund balances are adequate?
Yes, sir.
You know, and I've been in this business over 30 years. That's why I asked the question. And I've been in a number of other communities. And in my professional opinion, for a community this size, they have healthy fund balances. They manage their money. They live within their means. As you said, you know, we had a carryover from last year. Expenses versus revenue. If only the federal government did it as well as we do in Kingfisher, Oklahoma. You can quote me on that one.
No, really, Kingfisher, for the size, let's say we do several that are about the size. You guys are sitting really, really well. It's been a hard couple of years for people after the pandemic. And some of those funds that they were used to getting, and some of the governmental grants that kind of went away, that they had kind of relied on, expected to be expanded and did not. So that was really good. I don't have a breakdown of the grants you received last year. There's still quite a few. I know, did you have one for utility services being like the water?
33, like 33 relocation water line was done too. We just got our money for that today.
Just got. So I'm hoping you won't be a single audit next year.
We just got that today.
Because I do those too. Now, you guys are sitting really well. You've gone up a little bit each year. And your numbers haven't fluctuated enough that we would have any concern for anything going forward. So you guys are doing very well. And you guys are so easy to work with and very organized. And Anita, we bug her to death for like at least a full day, if not a day and a half. And everybody's just so welcoming. I think this is my seventh year coming here.
As a city manager, I just want the council or commissioners to hear that there was no findings. You know, we didn't have a management letter outlining concerns. And that, you know, we're adequately balancing our needs versus wants and revenues and expenses.
Now, your expenses went down a little bit last year. Your revenues were a little bit down compared to the budget. But your expenses were down as well, so you guys didn't overexpend in any area that we found.
Yeah.
How do we all have a question?
As long as it's balanced out, I'm good. As long as she's happy. And she's accurate.
I'll blame that on Chuck the Trump.
No, I'm very happy with the finances here. You know, I've had a chance to look at other communities, much larger than this one. I think they do a good job.
You guys are doing very well.
Any other questions of Ms. Morgan? If not, do we have a motion for acceptance?
I'll make a motion to accept the audit from CBW.
Now, second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Did you say you've been in this business 30 years?
More than 30.
Oh, you have. Okay, I've never heard of that.
You haven't seen the pictures of him?
I've seen pictures.
That item carries.
Because I reviewed him when he was.
That's right. Next item on the agenda is a presentation by the pool manager Savannah Story, Ms. Story.
Hello.
Hello.
I am Savannah Story. I'm your pool director. Just gonna give you guys some updates on what the pool's been doing, what we're getting ready for. So on May 20th, we will start our summer hours. Right now, we're finishing out the end of the school year, so we have 13 school parties remaining. So it's gonna be a busy week this week.
And those are during the day?
Yes. So I've gotten in contact with the school, pulled the lifeguards out, let them handle out who's gonna work those ones, and then went from there. So.
Do we charge the schools, or no?
Yeah.
Oh, we do? I didn't know if we did or not.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah.
I just do the private rental rate of the 200, because I know some schools are bigger and have bigger groups. So it's just the easiest thing to let them just run it out privately for the two hours.
Yeah.
And then, I really don't.
We talked about the challenge, we're tracking residents where they're coming.
Yeah.
We still have about 60% of our residents coming from outside the city of Kingfisher.
Yeah. That's what, for April, we had, just for Kingfisher, we had 318 that did use the pool out of 600 people that came. So it's half, but.
And it fluctuates by the month.
It does.
Yeah.
It does. That's what, I mean, April was kind of crazy, the end of it. I mean, we had a lot of rainout days. So when there was lightning, I can't have people in the pool. But I do the best I can. I'm watching that, making them happy.
So for April, so for April, we had an average of 20 people a day use the pool?
Yeah. Yeah, if you look at it that way, yeah.
Okay.
I'm curious, as far as memberships. How many memberships do we have at the pool currently?
So the last time I came in there was 40.
40?
Yes.
Annual memberships.
Annual, yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Are we promoting that? What are we doing to market some of that? I know one of the concerns that some commissioners have had is obviously we've put some money into the pool.
Yeah.
And we've been relatively aggressive in trying to promote that. I didn't know how that, is that continuing, or what are you doing?
The ones that I get that are daily, everyday swimmers, which are my water walkers, lap swimmers, stuff like that. If they come in every day, and they've been doing it for months at a time, I've been suggesting, why don't you just go ahead and do your membership? It's gonna be cheaper on you, and you can just come in and swim. So that's how I've sold some of them recently, that way. But as far as marketing, I don't know if we've actually posted it anywhere.
No, but you have done some things, like we posted on Facebook. For October, she did Find a Halloween Pumpkin. You did that, you did that. She's done some nights where you did some game nights out there, I believe, to get the family back into the pool on Thursday, I believe it was. So she has been doing different things and marketing it that way to get people back. But the schools, her private pool parties are keeping her very busy, and so is her schools right now. So she, her parties are her biggest moneymaker for her, her private pool parties are. And I think you do, if I remember correctly, you do have parties during Saturday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, am I correct?
Yeah. And then for summer, I'm gonna offer it Tuesday through Sunday. Since kids are out of school, I figure we could do private parties in the evening, whatever day they want. Not like they're trying to get home and get ready for bed for school the next day. So I'm gonna let anyone try to book one Tuesday through Sunday on that.
So is there a flat rate for membership, like outside of city limits and inside city limits, or just?
No, it's just.
Residents get a discount?
No, just one flat rate.
Which is what for the membership?
For the family one, it's 360. If you're a senior, it's 120, and for an individual, it's 180.
No, it's not. No, that's cheap.
And I know a long time ago, when I moved here, it was like connected to your city bill. You could have it just added to your bill, and then you just pay monthly towards your membership. But you guys don't do that anymore.
Really?
Yeah. So that was like, I moved here 2011, 13, something like that.
Interesting.
I didn't know that.
Yeah. And that was like how I did my membership for a couple of years, even if my kids went or not, just because it was so convenient. It just sounded like, when I, when I moved in and started up my utilities, they sold me on that. Like, the ladies up front was like, "Oh, are you a member, you know, do you have a membership to the pool? You know, if you, we can just add it to your bill." And I was like, "Eh, okay." Because the cost monthly sounds so much.
Yeah.
Easier. And you're just like, "Oh, and I just gotta pay my bill? No problem."
I have a question, Savannah. On your parties that you do, and I may have misunderstood, are you gonna do those in the daytime as well, and evenings, and in the? are you going to do those in the daytime as well and evenings and in the daytime?
Yes.
If it's a private party, is it open to the public?
No. Private means it's after our business hours. So once the pool is closed to the public, then we let the private parties come in.
Okay, but not during public service hours?
No. No, that's what we call our open swim parties.
Okay, thanks.
So another question. Do you have social media going?
Oh, we have the Facebook page.
I do the Facebook page.
Yeah.
Do we have a TikTok?
I don't.
And then she has a webpage that.
I don't use TikTok. I know you said that at our meeting too. But you have the teenagers. I said this at your meeting. You have the teenagers.
I know.
Any more activity on that page?
And when they're not in the.
I don't see much of it. So.
Well, I'll make them.
But I do post whatever she gets me to post.
Your manager was promoting.
Whatever she posts.
Obviously, we can probably step some of that up.
Yeah.
See, that could be a part of her job.
Any other questions of Ms. Story?
Let me, let me just say one thing. When Savannah was hired last August, Richard convinced me, we have not implemented it to have a second person just doing marketing. And we have not done that. Her salary line item is much lower. Her overall budget is at 52% with 83% of the fiscal year. So we could discuss that internally between Savannah and I that if we need to hire somebody to help us market it. But her focus of attention has just been day-to-day operations.
Last thing you want to do is hire another person for a loss leader in the first place.
Yeah, no, I understand. Yeah, I understand. And that's one of our concerns. But Richard felt strongly that maybe if we marketed it more, we would get more Kingfisher residents using it or outside. But I think we're doing okay. I wish the revenue was a little bit higher, total revenue for the year. But we'll see how the next two months, you know, as we close out the fiscal year goes. Savannah used to work for the city, 2017, 2018, yeah. And then she left and she came back. So she's very familiar with the operations, has done an outstanding job. Insurance, she's like Richard in a lot of ways. Cleanliness is, you know, the pool's cleanliness, I was just there last Thursday, is still at that high standard. She, she gets the lifeguards, not only saving lives, but they're also keeping the bathrooms clean and the public perception. So they do have a dress code down there, which wasn't always the case. And so we're, we're keeping a high standard for the pool.
What's the dress code? Oh, sorry.
Revenue is around 50 something thousand?
58,000, year to date, through the end of April.
What's the dress code at the pool?
Well, they used to allow just about anything, bikinis and.
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying. I was thinking like, you can't come in with shorts or something?
This is what they have to wear.
Yeah. I'm not worried about the public. I am worried about the employees, the lifeguards, both men and women.
Right.
And their demeanor and, and interaction with the public.
I get you. Okay. Because, yeah, I was confused. I was like, at the pool.
Any other questions?
I want to know though, since her manager is a high schooler, right?
Yeah.
Is there not some incentives you could add? Can you put this on a list of having her do some social media?
We can.
Yeah. I could talk to her about it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not a TikTok person either, Savannah, so I appreciate.
I'm glad you're not.
I'm old school like that. I'm a mess with it.
But I'm glad you're not. But I understand. Lots of people are.
We have to be very careful when we start doing social media in, in the cities that there's rules and stuff we have to follow.
So you could give her guidelines.
Yeah.
Just remember that. We've got a whole class on it. So that's something we can't do.
Give her guidelines.
Thank you, Ms. Story. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the presentation of the capital improvement plan by SRB, Mr. Smith and Mr. Long. We welcome you. Please enlighten us.
Well, thank you, Mayor and City Commissioner. My name is Mark Wong. Ryan Smith and I have been working on this project for the city. SRB was tasked to work with and on that presentation that's in front of you. There were three firms that were hired several months ago. Our firm, Park Hill Consultants and Team Design. We were all basically tasked with different roles. Park Hill was to handle water and wastewater treatment, process type design work. Team Design was to handle roadway, street and drainage type projects. And SRB's role was to help you embark upon developing a 10-year or a 20-year, some type of a capital improvement program. You've never had a formal capital program, program or a CIP. And so our role was to help facilitate that and then also to help look at how to program all of these projects in the future. What Ryan is going to go over and it's in this handout here that's in these slides is an assessment of your infrastructure. And then I'll kind of go over some funding realities that you have.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Mayor. I'm a council member. I'll have you turn to the second page. And Mark kind of already talked about the various items that we looked at, water resources, water treatment, water distribution. We also looked at wastewater collection, wastewater treatment and streets. Drainage is something else that eventually we want to incorporate into this plan that hasn't been addressed yet. So I'll just mention that. On the second page, I'm just going to dive right into some of the results. So after spending multiple days kind of assessing your infrastructure, those items that we talked about, we identified 26 water wastewater projects totaling almost $17 million worth of water. As far as streets, 24 streets, street projects were identified totaling almost $4 million. We have a little bit more of a breakdown here on where these water and wastewater projects fall. We have six water distribution system projects that we identified, 11 water treatment projects that we identified, three sanitary sewer collection system projects, four wastewater treatment projects. And these are not cheap projects on the wastewater treatment side. These are totally $9 million. And then two water resources projects, and that kind of makes up the project. I have included the list of these water and wastewater projects on the next page. And I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on all of these. I can answer some questions if there are some. But I do want to point out the difference here. Some are in red, you'll see, and some are in black font. With your current funding, we believe you can address the items in black. The ones in red, over the next 10 years, there's not enough funding to address these, these items. And I'll say, this is, this is really not a wish list. These aren't enhancement type projects. These are projects to address issues in the water and wastewater systems. And I can't, I can't stress enough, I think, the severity of the, the scenario we're facing here with these projects. A lot of these projects address violation type issues that we're already under or potentially facing in the future. These are, these are projects that really need to be done if you want to continue providing water and sanitary services to the city. I'll flip to the next slide here.
Hold on, Ryan. I want to clarify, make sure the commissioners understand. The ones in black, if we don't change our funding at all, could be accomplished with our existing revenue sources.
Over the next 10 years.
Over the next 10 years. Okay.
And that's really just looking at a half a million dollar investment over 10 years, correct?
Right. Yes, that's correct.
Cost estimates, today's numbers.
That's correct.
Obviously, five years down the road, this is going to be dramatically different.
That's right.
And there's some, we've got more extensive spreadsheets that kind of have forecasted this out that the city manager and the finance director will be able to use. But you're correct, it's today dollars.
On the second page, I've listed some of the street projects that were identified by Team Design. These are the 24 projects, all of them actually. And you'll notice all of these are red. These are considered a lower priority than the water and wastewater projects. And so over the next 10 years, we're not anticipating you'd be, you'd be being able to afford to do any street projects.
Brian, can you explain this PCI number?
That's a pavement condition score. And so there are a number of factors that they consider when addressing, when evaluating these streets. And so a higher number typically represents a higher priority. Now you'll see that not all of these are in that order. There were some other factors that were considered to creating the priority list, but these are ordered in the priority that we would want to hopefully address them.
And this part was done by Team?
It was, yes.
So what SRB did was they brought everybody together, analyzed it, prioritized it, and is helping us try to figure out how we're going to fund all of this.
So in the information that, did you also, or did they provide you with more specific information about like what causes?
My understanding is they drove every street in the city. Team did. And that they looked at traffic counts. They looked at how much, like, I know Debbie would like us to fix her street, but there's only 10 cars a day that drive up and down her street.
It's in there, though.
Yeah. But Will Rogers is a east-west corridor, and that's why it's at the top of the list.
No, what I was wondering though is, is, does someone have information about, like, he was explaining that the PCI numbers about.
Yes, they, they do.
Is there something that tells like, okay, this is what the problem is on that street? So we.
Yeah, so they, they have that where they basically detail what they considered by assigning these numbers that they rolled up for SRB to aggregate all of this together. There's, there is more detailed information that all of these guys put in.
Okay, that's what I was curious. Like, let you know, like, it's because of the flooding issues or it's because of gravel or something, you know, stuff like that.
One of the things, Commissioner Taylor, that, and Ryan stated, they have not really analyzed the drainage side of things at this point. So that's a whole different factor. And so, you know, obviously, we have some studies from years past on that. But in regards to the streets specifically, they just looked at it structurally for the most part.
Okay, okay.
So they're, they're looking for cracking and depending on the type of cracking that you have, Jeff can probably speak to this a lot better than I can, but longitudinal cracking, transverse cracking, or sometimes you'll have both, where it's an alligator kind of look to the paving surface. And these are all different factors that they're considering that might indicate subgrade problems. Some streets may be, it may be acceptable to mill and overlay these streets, but they're, they're looking at all of those.
So my general reason for the question was like, I'm wondering if, I know this is a 10-year like projection, but sometimes, you know, there's always like grants and stuff. So I'm wondering if you would have the information or whoever sits in your seat in the next 10 years would have the information to say, oh, okay, we need this one, this, apply for this grant for this street because of this issue. You see what I'm saying?
Funny you ask that. Because one of the things that we are dealing with, and not to, that Park Hill is working on currently is trying to see how we can free up some of the money that we've been, we were approved for on the wastewater treatment plant, but we haven't been able to access because of some other issues. Park Hill has sent a letter to Jim regarding that. But yeah, there, there are all, there are all kinds of grants. One of the things SRB brings to the table is the fact that they've done this with a number of other communities regarding funding. And as far as streets go, you know, we just finished up with the drilling fund grant on Starlight and Will Rogers. And we'll continue to look for things like that. That's kind of what our interest is. And these guys work with ODOT regularly, and so does Team. So we'll be on top of that.
Because I was just thinking like now, before we had this information, it's possible, you're just like, that street looks bad. We should submit a grant for that. You know what, not know like.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to get the grants that we need to fund all the streets that we need to address.
Right, right.
But anyway, we can talk about that later. Sorry, I didn't mean.
Yes. And, and Mark will talk a little bit more about that.
Funding.
Not all of the funding options have been identified in this budget that I've laid out. So once we do get further into looking for funding sources, then, you know, we may be able to turn some of these red to black.
Right. Awesome. Thank you.
Let's flip to the next page. And one of the things we need to look at in our assessment is maintenance of your current water and wastewater infrastructure. And while we identified 26 projects that need to be done for approximately $17 million, there's ongoing maintenance that also needs to be done in this community. And it's a, it's a fairly simple calculation. We look at how much infrastructure you have, how many pipelines, how many valves, how many hydrants. And we know the expected useful life of these materials. And we just apply a formula to say, you know, average age, you know, it's going to need to be replaced by this time. Can't do it all at once. So you need to plan for taking care of the worst ones over time. As we look at this, just based on the water and wastewater systems, we're estimating that you need to spend 1.5 million dollars per year in maintenance. Now, if this isn't addressed, what you end up with is emergency projects, water lines start breaking.
Sorry, there's more of that. What you end up with is 32 million dollars worth of infrastructure work you need to add down.
Correct. So you're, yeah. Spoiler alert there, yeah.
But one, can I, can you elaborate, Ryan, on, you know, you talk about not maintaining maybe our water distribution system, our sanitary sewer collection. But can you elaborate with some of the issues that we're dealing with now because we haven't dealt with some of that?
Okay. Let's take the wastewater treatment plant, for instance. The wastewater treatment plant is designed to handle 800,000 gallons per day. When it rains, and this is just an average rain, the plant is seeing 2 million gallons per day. That is because of what we call INI or infiltration of rainwater into your sanitary sewer system. So what that tells us.